... Jackson and they're going to give an update on the West Side Transit Study Project. And after that, our legislative team, which is our own Yvonne Bellamy, but also Mike Edwards from Kemper, and Chris Delacy is in town, our federal lobbyists from Holland and Knight, and they're going to talk to us about the legislative process and kind of some things that have been going on, but also as we get ready for 2018. And then I want to take five minutes, 10 minutes, and just talk through what we're seeing as the bigger items on your agenda when you come back from the recess. You're going to be gone for five weeks and we want to give you some things to think about while you're gone. And then James Mickel, who just does the dynamite job with the Norfolk Night Hawks program, was out of town last, your last meeting, so we held off on giving you an update on the Night Hawks program, but he'll jump up and do that. So with that, Mayor, I know you want to do a couple of introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have with us tonight Cara Sylvester, who's an international student in our internship program at Norfolk Circuit Court. She's from the University of Warwick in England. She's assisting Judge McLeozie at Circuit Court, and she's working on an article for the Virginia Lawyer on mental health issues, as well as compiling a workbook on the death penalty to be used by the Virginia Court, Supreme Court Judges. Cara, will you please stand and just take a second?
I met Judge McLeozie at my university last year in October, and he had an opening for Commerce Center. I came last year to Arkansas and worked in the public affairs office, so I wanted to take the opportunity to answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, our new assessor here, Pete Rota, who holds the CAE and RES Professional Designations from the International Association of Assessing Officers. He is past president of the International Association of Assessors, Assessing Officers. Pete, welcome. There you are.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I've met so many people and struggling to remember the names, but that will come with time. But I just appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this team. Very excited about this opportunity, and so looking forward to a long and healthy relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. All right, Mr. Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So again, in terms of your docket out front, R1 withdrawn by the applicant. You also have an ordinance that we're going to add to the agenda at your place that allows us, that has you all appropriate some monies that comes into the sheriff's office. Sheriff gets a per diem for, from United States Marshal that for housing federal prisoners. That per diem, as I think you all know, pays for a number of different things, including bonuses for some of his employees for a fitness supplement, as well as a tenure-based supplement for some of his civilian employees, and if there is money available to pay for some equipment. Because you all are on meet for five weeks, if we didn't get this money appropriated, then it would impact their pay. So we just wanted to add that on. I think everybody's straightforward. You've got a memo from Greg Patrick and that actual ordinance at your place. So with that, I'd ask Stephanie House to step up and, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we've really, we have some boards that need to be filled, and we didn't get to it. If for some reason the formal session gets done early, would anybody have a problem sitting and finalizing that? Because it's not that many, but we need to get some in because some have expired or, or just, we could do it up there at the daisies?
Yes.
Does anybody have a problem there? Do you guys want to wait five weeks?
I think it's a good idea.
It may be wishful thinking, but if we can go fast and get you this done in 45 minutes, maybe give you 15 minutes. Not to put any pressure on you, Stephanie.
I talk fast. It's okay. Thank you for having us. The Norfolk Electoral Board and I are here to discuss a couple of precinct relocations and a precinct boundary change request. We realize you're going to be going on your retreat, so we're trying to get this in. So when you come back from your retreat, this could be held for public hearing and council vote. The first is to move from the current Ocean View Elementary School into the new Ocean View Elementary School. The second, moving from the Larchmont Recreation Center behind Larchmont Elementary School into the new school. Those are both completing construction. The students will be moving in in September. We hope to be in there for the elections in November. We'd also like to change the precinct name from Old Dominion to Larchmont School, which is the name of the facility for the voters. Our precinct boundary change request is to extend Larchmont Library Precinct, which the current precinct is broken up by the orange line there with Old Dominion. Extend that down Magnolia Avenue to Jamestown Crescent at the Bridge. Bring these voters in this section here over to Larchmont Library. That will essentially double the size of the registered voters in Larchmont Library Precinct and reduce the number of voters in the current Old Dominion precinct, which will become Larchmont School. That'll drop the current active voters down to 3,351, making it a more manageable precinct, helping to reduce the lines. Of course, you're going to be going on break, so we would request notification through the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office for a public hearing and council vote when you return session in August. As we have the November general election coming up for the gubernatorial race, we would be sending out notifications to all the voters, notifying them through the civic leagues, to letting them know of those changes, and that'll impact elections beginning in November. That's it. Pretty quick.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Wayne Green is going to jump up for a moment and, I'm sorry, Wayne, and just make the public aware, as much as anything, and give Ms. McClellan and Dr. Wibbly a chance to comment on the public fishing situation over in Colonial.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. In 2016, the residents of the Colonial Place Review Civic League, they sent a letter to the city requesting that we lift a partial ban of the no fishing crabbing ordinance on Mayflower Road on the bulkhead. Public, the departments of Recreation Parks, Overspace, General Services, the Health Department, and the Police Department, we've met on a couple of occasions to figure out how we could accommodate that request. We brought a number of possible options to the Civic League for them to consider, and on June 12th, the Civic League voted in favor of lifting a partial ban based on the green line that you see right there.
Thank you. This was going to come up for a vote. We had some conversation in the agenda meeting, and it was said it was just enough uncertainty that we weren't ready for, for to come before you all. But there's an expectation from some of the folks in the public that we might have, that we would have a vote tonight. And I know Ms. McClellan and Dr. Wibbly wanted their six peers to know a little bit more about some of the thinking in the community.
All right. What's next?
Come on, Steve.
Well, I just, yeah, we're, in addition to the Civic League, the city sent out letters to all the residents of Colonial Place Review and notifying them of the proposed change and welcome to input and engagement from them. So there was concern that this was a Civic League only vote that we were considering, and in fact, we are actually taking, we have notified every resident and asked them to weigh in on this, on this issue. We continue to receive input to both pro and con, and we'll take that consideration when we vote off again.
Or would we do vote on the other?
So is anybody curious about this? I mean, because there, we are hearing a lot of side, both sides, and those that are in opposition are concerned about litter, they're concerned about problems with wildlife, with fishing lines left on, they're concerned about noise, they're concerned, what else? They feel that, some of the people have argued that there's access to fishing off of Granby Street Bridge, that that should be close enough. I don't know. I would say it's about equal, the comments we've heard thus far. Has anybody, have you all been copied on these?
I've got two emails and two physical letters opposing it. I haven't anybody in favor, but that's usually the case.
The Civic League voted 28 to 3 in favor. I've received approximately half and half, 50/50 in favor, 50 in con. My, if we were to consider this, I would suggest we would do it so that it would sunset after a year, so we basically create a pilot program to determine whether or not this works, and that we would enforce the regulation, and we would be looking at it after sunset and enforce trash and everything else. So I would only do it under those circumstances, but I think we need to get a little bit more input from the neighbors. And I'm pleased that we have further engaged the cities, the citizens, so thank you for that.
So, so Councilwoman, for the ones who are in opposition, has this recommendation been brought to them that it be a possible pilot after one year?
Some of the folks who have opposed have said if this were to go forward, they would ask it to be a pilot.
That's been only theory informally. I think there's been nothing on the formal. My question to Daryl and to, is, do we have the capacity to enforce this and to keep this clean?
We'd have to enhance our enforcement, but we'd actually enhance and actually expand our trash pickup. We'd have to put additional trash barrels out, and we'd have to patrol by our park rangers and the NPD. We could make it happen as a pilot.
The other question that I have, that Dr. Webby and I discussed, is where are there, where is fishing allowed in the city of Norfolk? Is that publicized anywhere?
We'll get that answer for you, and I know what those options are.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So William Harrell is here from HRT, and I've mentioned his team of Ray Amoruso and Jamie Jackson, and they're going to give you an update on the West Side Transit Study Project.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, and certainly members of the public. It's our pleasure to be with you this evening. Before we start the brief presentation, I certainly want to thank Councilman Thomas for his participation in the christening of a new ferry that serves both Norfolk and Portsmouth. With the opening of Waterside Live Development Ridership has really skyrocketed on the ferry, so I would certainly invite you to come out and take a look at all that's being done. So thank you very much for your participation. As the managers indicated, Mr. Amoruso will follow me, who will also be followed by Jamie Jackson. We intend to provide the relevant background as relates to the purpose and need of this particular study. While there are several alternatives that are part of the Tier One analysis, we will review them in a somewhat big picture perspective. We can certainly drill down as your time permits, if you would like. We would welcome the opportunity to meet with council members individually, to review this information in greater detail, as well as to address any service issues or questions that you may have. Finally, after Jamie presents, I will very briefly address the strategic view of transit funding, which we think will be relevant as you prepare your upcoming legislative package. So at this time, I'll invite Mr. Amoruso to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell.
Good evening, Mary Alexander, and fellow councilmen and women, and City Manager Smith. We're very excited to be here today. We've been working very diligently with your staff as we got the study underway. I wanted to thank personally Thelma Drake and Jeff Relisky for attending practically every meeting we've had to date since the study's come underway. We're here to talk about the Norfolk, what we call the Norfolk Station, Naval Station Norfolk Transit Extension Study, the West Side Extension. There is a history of looking at extending high-capacity transit. I know most folks think it's automatically going to be light rail, but we're looking at different technologies to Naval Station Norfolk. It goes back as far as, as you can see in this graphic here, 1996, in various forms of study. But the Lynchpin Study I want to focus on is the one that we started in 2013 and ended in 2015, which came up with a recommendation of potential alignments that served the eastern side of the city and the western side of the city, and that's depicted on this graphic. There were some clouds of how they would connect, some unknowns. We could not come to resolution with the public involvement in terms of exactly what alignment would connect to the existing tide, and that's what those big clouds represent. The funding in place for the West Side Study is provided by Regional Surface Transportation Funds through the Transportation Planning Organization. It's fully funded. It's a 12-month study. But essentially, we had intended from 2015 to carry this forward to the next phase of project development, which was the development of more information related to the environmental impact study that's required in the federal process, because this project was indeed going to be funded partially by federal funds, so there are certain requirements because of that. However, the Federal Transit Administration said, before you embark upon the environmental studies that are required, we need you to identify a reasonable alternative in the western side of the city, a West Carter, so to speak, prior to entry into that documentation process. So the purpose of the study is to explore in partnership with the city a potential high-capacity transit connection that connects from the existing tide light rail station on the western part of the city and connects directly to the Naval Station Norfolk with intermediate destinations along the way, and there are many that Jamie will talk about. But essentially, is to fill in the gap of the cloud. What is the right street that the alignment has to run on, and work through the process of defining the technology, and that's why we're here today. Purpose and need, which is one of the requirements by the federal government. Why is this transportation investment needed? What is the problem you're trying to solve? It's very evident for anyone that's lived here for any deal of time. The efficient movement of the military and civilian personnel back and forth to Naval Station Norfolk is critical, as it says here, to the region and to the city in particular, and also to the military in terms of state of readiness. There's between 60,000 and 70,000 commuters every day that commute for one reason or another to the Navy Base. That parking is a representation of what occurs on the Naval Station Norfolk every day. They are at capacity and have no room at the end for any additional parking. The military has expressed quite clearly their excitement about the potential of high-capacity transit being extended to the base. We want to enhance mobility and access to the base, but we want to partner with the city with its redevelopment and economic development plans for all the intermediate destinations and changes that are occurring daily within the city. And most importantly, we want to make a fiscally responsible transit decision on what that investment will be and what kind of financial partnership will be with the state and with the federal government. Jamie's going to come up here, Jamie Jackson is going to come up here and talk a little bit about the alternatives that we have identified.
Thank you, Mr. Amoruso. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and of course, City Manager Smith. So I'm actually going to go through at a very high level the alternatives that we have developed. I do want to just say specifically thank you to Jeff Relisky and also Thelma Drake, as they are our city partners, are working with us on the project. So where we are today is we've developed 14 alternatives. So when I say the word alternative, that literally means the path. How are we going to get from our current infrastructure to the Navy Base? We have 12 of those alternatives that will really look at all modes of transit, which I'll talk about shortly, and two of those, two of those alternatives are really going to look at bus only. So in front of you today, you see those main 12 alternatives that we're looking at. So when we're looking at the west side of Norfolk, obviously, we have to look at the full gamut of options or opportunities that may be available. The study has to evaluate, really, what's the feasibility along these paths. They're grouped together just for the sake of the cluster effect of, of the alternatives. So we're looking at streets like Granby Street, Finn Church. Are we going down Llewellyn, Colley, Monticello, Bus Street. So we really have to take it at, you know, when we're looking at the alternatives, we're starting at the Tide Station and literally going up all of those alternatives to see what is the best fit. So you may ask, how are we evaluating those? What tools are we utilizing? We've already met with the planning departments. We'll be meeting with traffic and engineering, and we've been meeting with other groups, including our key stakeholders, to see kind of what works with the fabric of the city, what works with those particular neighborhoods, and also what's feasible. As you know, we do have some resiliency challenges and flooding challenges in Norfolk, so we need to make sure that when we're evaluating those alternatives, that we consider those. We'll be looking at these from the sake of aggregate crossings. Do we have to evaluate these alternatives as it relates to power lines, and of course, as I mentioned, being in the right of way of Norfolk Southern. So we really are taking a high-level look today. We're going to whittle these alternatives down to probably two or three, evaluate those in detail, also look at ridership numbers at that point, and then come to the city with a preferred alternative at the end. But what we want to make sure that we do in this process is make sure that the city and the public has enough information to make an informed decision about an alternative on the west side and/or if there's a no-build alternative, which could potentially be an option from this study. So at a high level, I just want to go over the mode alternatives. So we can't assume, as Mr. Amoruso mentioned, that it's going to be light rail. There are other options. So I'll start off with bus rapid transit. Bus rapid transit, if you think about it, is really light rail and rubber tires. It can operate in mixed traffic, or it can have dedicated right-of-way. It doesn't require as much infrastructure as you may see for the light rail system that we have today. You have stops that are a little less frequent than you may see for our fixed route bus system. You have off-board fare payment. You have level boarding. You have real-time arrival information at the train station. So it's really more than just bus service. And it's a model that we see in Cleveland and other areas that has worked well, and also in Richmond, they're developing the Pulse today. Modern streetcar, similar to what we see for light rail. It's a smaller vehicle. So as you know, there are some tight turns in smaller streets in the city of Norfolk, and this may be a good fit for some of the alternatives that we're looking at. So your frequency of stops may be two to three, every, every two to three city blocks, which again gives you that feel of getting off and on the bus. So maybe you're going to the medical college, maybe you're going to ODU, maybe you're going to Shops and Gint or Colley area. This provides an alternative for us to look at. It can be on, well, it can look at both the off-wire solution. So there may be smaller, smaller areas that we won't be connected to those overhead wires that you see today for light rail, but ultimately, you'll see that same type of infrastructure. And then, of course, the light rail system. We have the tide, so for time's sake, I won't go into that. But again, we've got three modes that we need to make sure that we clearly review and vet, for lack of a better term, for each of these alignments, to make sure what, or to look at what's a good fit for each of these alternatives. So the project process, we started the project in May. We've identified all 14 Tier One alternatives, as I mentioned before. What we're doing now is going through that screening process, so really being diligent in our efforts to see if there's a viable alternative on the west side, or a few alternatives on the west side that we can look at further. Once we get to those two or three, again, we'll take that deep dive into those alternatives, and so you'll be able to see more data and information about the potential of high-capacity transit with various modes on these alternatives. In September, we'll be coming back to the public and to the council with these alternatives to get your feedback and guidance. Again, this is a project that is both a partnership between HRT and the city, so we need to make sure that we're both invested in this effort and we're making the right decision for Norfolk. And then at the end of this process, we will end up with a preferred alternative, which we will look at in the next phase of study against the east side alternative, which is the Military Circle Highway area that came out of the last study, as Mr. Amoruso mentioned. So that's the conclusion of this piece of the presentation, and we'll answer questions at the end.
Just two brief slides, but we felt it was very relevant to address the transit funding issue, which we think is very important. When you look at one of the largest employers of this region, such as Naval Station Norfolk, 23% of those going there, the largest amount are coming from Virginia Beach, followed by Norfolk at 19%. You've got Chesapeake at 12, the peninsula, you see the numbers there, and even 26% coming from other areas within our region. Based on the current cost allocation plan, any extension of the tide or any other public transportation is borne by the city that the improvement falls within. So therefore, based on the current model, the city of Norfolk would have the burden of both the operating costs as well as the local capital. So as you look to address your legislative package, we thought it was very important to address the major sources of revenue that support public transportation today. On the federal point, as there were proposed budget cuts to transportation funding in the president's budget, we certainly will be working with the congressional delegation to sustain that transit funding. Now, that is absolutely critical, because a project of this magnitude, although we don't have cost estimates, you can assume that it would be a new starts project. And at this point, that is very much a federal process, and our hope is that that is maintained so that that continues to be an option to fund the Naval Station project. At the state level, and this isn't new to you, there is a funding cliff as it relates to state capital funding. In fiscal year 19, $130 million will be needed to maintain the status quo. I had the opportunity today to address the Hampton Roads delegation on this issue. It's a very important issue that we hope the legislature will address. There is a study committee that's involved in that right now. The important note we want to make there, this is our state of good repair. This isn't for expansion projects. This is to purchase buses and to maintain service. For Hampton Roads Transit, over our six-year capital budget, that's about $40 million. Fair box, you know, certainly one of the things that we have really stepped forward as it relates to making sure that all participate in the additional cost for public transportation, and we are increasing our fares October 27th, 2017. And finally, the point that we've continued to make is we certainly want to work at the federal and state level so that we can relieve some of the pressure that it relates to city funding of public transportation. Certainly, we're working on a regional strategy. We think, just as you had HB 2313, that provides a regional source for roads, bridges, and tunnels, which we support greatly. We use those facilities as well. There is a need for a regional dedicated funding source to take that pressure off of our municipalities. So as you look to develop your legislative initiatives, we certainly want to work with your team in addressing that. So we are available for any questions that you may have, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. A question I have, the west side, the environmental impact on the west side, is that, it sounded like to me that that was mandatory.
If we're going to follow the federal process, which we are, because we're seeking federal funds, it'll be mandatory to evaluate both the east side and the west side in an environmental document. So the next phase, which is funded, the state came up with almost 96% of the funding for the next phase to do the environmental study. It's matched by 4% by the city. So the next phase is funded. So it'll be both the east side and the west side evaluated equally to determine which one is the best alternative moving forward. The federal government only allows one court to be funded at a time.
You know, we talked about this some time ago, and we haven't talked about it recently. And it's been my experience that the most expensive part of light rail is acquiring the right-of-way. And in regards to, you'd be surprised, Mr. Harrell, you hadn't come on board, but you'd be surprised at how much it costs us to acquire right-of-way for the tide. I mean, even some of the most ridiculously small lots became more expensive because of the tide and the purpose of it. And that's why I recommended some time ago Church Street, because we own the right-of-way. If you think about Church Street, you know, you have a traffic median that runs from, you know, right at City Hall Avenue, right straight down to Past Forest Lawn Cemetery. And so this is something that I think that we should, you know, really evaluate, is what the cost would be to acquire the right-of-way. Some of those eminent domain lawyers, two in particular, the names I won't call, made a lot of money, a lot of money representing different property owners. We also had to pay a whole lot of money for businesses that were, business, their business were interrupted, you know, right around.
Duke Street?
Duke Street and all that, you know. We've spent a lot of money, you know, on that. So as we move forward, I still believe that the Church Street area would be the best route, because we own the right-of-way. You get up to City Park and 38th Street, you can use some of these shuttle buses to take 38th Street around Park Avenue to the back of ODU. The Granby Street Bridge would probably, that probably would need, you know, some extensive regirding, should I say, or girding up. And then in some instances, we'd have to underground some utilities. So that would be, that would be my vote on that. Norfolk was very successful in, I put a couple of things down, in our light rail effort, first time out of the block. We, it cost us just about $42 million a mile, and that's, that's the lowest per mile in the, in the United States, period. The city's share was $8 billion, which is about 17% for that 17 and a half million. And, I mean, for that seven and a half mile of tracks. So it's a very expensive undergoing, and with everything that we have going on in the city, you know, we're talking about St. Paul Boulevard Quadrant, and so it's, we'd have to be very, very aggressive, you know, in regards to, you know, this effort. I, you know, and so I just think that we should, you know, just really consider the fact that we don't have to acquire so much of a right-of-way, as I know you're going to do a thorough study, but my experience and the money it cost us for right-of-way, the money it cost us for businesses that were in peril for a while, I think we should the money it cost us for businesses that were in peril for a while, I think we should look at those costs and try to control that, and that will make the entire effort a lot easier.
Mr. Smigel?
Kind of a statement and a question first. How is it determined which one was going to be studied first, the Tier Two or Tier One? There's been conversations here on council that the Military Highway, which is the Tier Two One, just made absolutely more sense than bringing this down through flooded areas. And my statement is that anything, that anywhere that this takes it through flooding should automatically be taken off the list. If, if there's any, as a resilient city, we should not be running this train if that's what it is, or any rapid bus through anything that floods. And to me, that would save you a lot of money just by taking those routes off. I know you did Tier One and Tier Two. Tier One is now expanded to 12 alternatives, and is Tier Two going to have the same amount of alternatives? And I'm just curious how, all of a sudden, the momentum shifted back to Hampton Boulevard when I thought it was sounding more like that this council had more of a priority of moving it more towards Military Highway, which is what I would have studied first on that.
There's a lot in that question, Councilman Smigel.
It is. It's the first time I've had the opportunity to ask it publicly.
And that's fine.
Because I couldn't get the answers privately with the previous administration.
And let me make it really, as clear as possible for everyone, so there's no confusion. The Tier One and Tier Two remain only to the West Side study in terms of the universe of alternatives and winnowing it down to a smaller set to find the one for the West Side. The East Side alignment that you see here, that's more or less focused on Military Highway, Little Creek Boulevard, and going through the master plan of redevelopment for Military Circle, that alignment was defined except for the master plan and how it filtered through there. So it was set aside because the federal government, which is funding the study, said, you need the same kind of definition on the West Side before you begin the, before you begin the environmental impact statement. We need to define, so there's no priority. They just said, we want you to figure out, is there a viable alternative? And that is a question that they said to you. Do the study to find out if there really is a viable alternative on the West Side. Is it resilient and sustainable? Will it run in the public right-of-way? Do you need a massive amount of private property? Because I must mention that, for the most part, we are looking at public right-of-ways in all 14 alternatives that we're examining the West Side. There's no private, for the whole part, there's no Norfolk Southern Railroad right-of-way we're looking to acquire. For the most part, we want it run in the public right-of-way. Yes, there will be slivers of land here and there needed for returning radii and some access changes, but for the most part, the 11-mile extension is going to run in the public right-of-way in any of the 14 alternatives. So for the West Side study, this alignment here, the universe of 14 alignment alternatives that we worked out with the general public, screened down to two or three that can look at detailed analysis, and then asked the question, is the cost versus the ridership gained versus the sustainability investment worth a build alternative on the West Side? If there is none, then that's fine. The federal government said that's a fine answer. If there is, bring it into the environmental document and measure it against the East Side. Determine your capital cost, your operating cost, your ridership potential for both the West Side and the East Side, and let the numbers speak for themselves. That's how they see it in a non-political environment.
And what's the timeline on the East Side study? It would only be after the elimination of the West?
The way they want to see it, and the feds do everything sequential, is figure out your, figure out your challenge in the West Side.
Mr. Graves is coming in. All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything else?
We're good there.
You have a question? Go ahead, Mr. Riddick.
Yeah, I mean, let's just don't cut it off like that. My question, Ray, did we ever, did Norfolk ever apply for funds in the legislative package for the West Side study?
No, sir. Regional surface transportation money came through the Transportation Planning Organization that flows through HRT to do the study. So it's being funded through the federal funds that come to the TPO to fund the study.
Thanks. That's all that I have.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Always great to see you. Appreciate everything you're doing for us. We will move quickly to Yvonne De Bellamy, who is our international, our intergovernmental relations manager, who has hit the ground running. And she has, as I said earlier, Mike Edwards from Kemper Consulting, who helps us with the General Assembly, and Chris Delacy from Holland and Knight, that helps us at the federal level, and they're going to give us a, an update of our legislative process.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Smith. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a legislative report. I'm pleased to be joined by Chris Delacy. I don't think you all have met him. And also Mike Edwards. So tonight, I will share the outcome of a few bills that were on the city's radar during the 2017 General Assembly session and the timeline to follow in adopting our 2018 legislative package. Afterwards, Mike will highlight interim studies, 2018 to 2020 budget pressures, and go over key 2018 General Assembly dates. Following Mike, Chris will provide a federal report. During the 2017 General Assembly session, nearly 3,000 bills were introduced, and over 1,700 of them became law. Most of the laws took effect on July 1. As previously mentioned, I will highlight several bills that were on the city's radar. First, the decriminalization of simple possession of marijuana. Several bills decriminalizing simple possession of marijuana were introduced during the 2017 General Assembly session. However, they were referred to the Virginia State Crime Commission for study. And from now through August the 25th, the commission is seeking written input from stakeholders with an interest in this study. The responses and findings will be presented during the October 5th Crime Commission meeting in Richmond. So if the city would like to submit a formal letter in support of decriminalizing simple possession of marijuana, I would gladly draft and share it with the Crime Commission. Driver's license forfeiture due to simple possession of marijuana. Before July 1, any convicted person of marijuana possession automatically had their driver's license suspended for six months. Now judges have the discretion to suspend or not suspend the driver's license of an adult convicted of marijuana, simple possession of marijuana. However, if convicted adults have their driver's license not suspended, they must do 50 hours of community service. This legislation, it received bipartisan support, and it showed grace for convicted adults needing their license to commute to and from work. We all are aware that police traffic stops can sometimes spiral out of control. Now, Virginia law mandates each driver education program and public school systems include instruction on how to interact with law enforcement officers during traffic stops. Per the 2016 National Center for Educational Statistics, more than one out of every five students report being bullied. Now, the Code of Virginia requires public school principals to notify the parent or guardian of any student involved in alleged incident of bullying within five school days of such allegation. Blight removal in event of an emergency. The Department of Neighborhood Development asked me about this legislation in February. As now clarified and state code, localities that must demolish or repair blighted property in the event of an emergency can pass along incurred costs to property owners. Airbnb. For the past few General Assembly sessions, Airbnb has been discussed and debated. This session, legislation allowing localities to adopt ordinances regulating the registration of persons offering short-term rentals was passed. Individuals that fail to register face a penalty of up to $500. I must note that licensed realtors will be exempt from the registration.
Does that mean licensed realtors who have an Airbnb or licensed realtors book an Airbnb for a client?
If I'm not mistaken, I think it's all licensed realtors. I can double-check in, let you know. You're welcome. So lastly, community wealth building. The General Assembly approved $7.5 million for creating wealth in a community. The city of Norfolk was awarded over $243,000 with a potential for four one-year renewals. The funding will be used in support of employment training opportunities for poverty-shricken behavioral health consumers. And per Norfolk Community Services Board, in the first year, a minimum of 75 individuals with behavioral health disorders, who are under 200% of the federal poverty level, will be served. Now, I will quickly provide a timeline for adopting the city's 2018 legislative package. From now to early August, the process of identifying legislative priorities will take place. And as we progress through the summer, I will TM Mr. Smith's one-on-one meetings with council members to assist in capturing legislative priorities for the 2018 General Assembly. Also of note, the General Assembly delegation will formally be introduced to Mr. Smith and the city's executive team this Thursday. In September, an introductory list of priorities will be shared at the council retreat with additional priorities considered. After the retreat, to early November, the legislative package will be finalized, and between early November to early December, the legislative package will be adopted and shared with our General Assembly delegation. So to that end, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Kemper Consulting appreciates the opportunity to work again with the city of Norfolk as we help you between now and the beginning of the General Assembly in January to develop a strategic legislative package. Want to accomplish two goals quickly this evening. One, run through a couple items that I think will be of interest as we lead into the General Assembly and then may lead to significant legislation during the session that we'll be watching very carefully and working on possibly. And then second, talk about some of the state's budget pressures. Joint Subcommittee on Coastal Flooding is entering its fourth and final authorized year to date. I think it's fair to say they've worked largely on helping the state get its house in order to help localities, although Chairman Staley and Vice Chairman Locke are working hard to obtain additional state dollars for local and regional match, match money for the Army Corps. They took the first step last year, hope to take the second step next, this coming year, and they also continue to push the adoption of a resiliency officer in the state that would cross jurisdictional boundaries within the state government to assist localities. Joint Subcommittee to Evaluate Tax Preferences, that's a standing committee. The concern here is historic tax preferences. I don't think there's a disagreement in Richmond about the importance and the effectiveness of the policy regarding historic rehabilitation tax credits. The issue is there are some appropriators who want to cap the amount of dollars that are appropriated annually to the program. And obviously, it has been a huge success to traditional older cities like Norfolk, Richmond, et cetera, and we want to certainly protect that program. Mental Health Services and the Commonwealth, commonly referred to as the Deeds Commission, is entering its fourth year. It will go on for two more years. The prime consideration this year and probably next year is reformation of our CSB policy statewide and hopefully additional funding for them. Virginia Wireless Communications Infrastructure Work, I know your land use team has worked closely with VML. This is entering the third year of negotiations, sometimes heated, between local governments and the wireless industry regarding protecting, in our interest, protecting local government land use authority as the industry seeks to site more smaller mid-sized towers. And then the last one I want to note is the Joint Subcommittee on Local Government Fiscal Stress. This really was generated by the problem in Petersburg, but I think that the members of that joint subcommittee, at least in the second year, so maybe a year from now, want to put on the table taxing authorities of local governments, those that currently work well, and hopefully those that don't work as well. Mr. Mayor, as we look forward to the 18th session, we know it's a new biennial budget. The outgoing governor, Governor McCullough, will introduce the new biennial budget in December. The General Assembly will act on that, and then the new governor will have an opportunity to act on the recommendations of the General Assembly. Revenue forecast projections, we know will continue to be moderate, if not conservative. We're not going to see dramatic revenue growth. I think the chairman appropriations and the, and the co-chairman Senate Finance will echo that when you see them between now and then. The state finished the year, Commonwealth finished the year FY '17 with $132 million carry forward. We don't call it a surplus in Virginia, it's a carry forward. And under the current budget, the appropriators had agreed to set aside 50% of that into an active reserve fund, not the rainy day fund, but a more agile, if you will, reserve fund. House leadership last week called for the entire $132 million to be sent to this reserve fund for protection, and the reason for that is important. S&amp;P has put Virginia on negative watch going forward due to what it believes is overreliance on the use of the rainy day fund. And then lastly, we just wanted to give you some of the spending increase pressures that the General Assembly and governor are facing. Medicaid and K-12 funding make up approximately just under 50% of all general fund expenditures by the state, and each two years, we reforecast Medicaid funding and K-12. Those were the increases, this time two years ago, so we would expect the increases to be fairly dramatic as it relates to Medicaid and public education funding. I'm really going to skip the last key date. You can look at that at your leisure. Again, maybe the most important would be as it relates to budget and revenues, and that's August 21, when the governor will close out the year and provide us with the actual dollar amounts. And then we'll get the new revenue forecast in December. Thank you all.
Welcome, Chris. I think this is the first time you've been before this group, so we're thrilled to have you.
Well, I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you again, members of the council. Mr. Manager, appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. My name is Chris Delacy, and I am a partner at Holland and Knight in Washington, DC. I have represented the city of Norfolk for going on over 12 years, advocating for your federal agenda in Washington. And I have some good news and bad news from Washington. The bad news is that our federal government is finding new ways to be dysfunctional. The good news is that despite this dysfunction, the city's agenda is moving forward. And the latest evidence of this agenda moving forward is Mayor Alexander's visit to Washington, DC last week. We had a round of meetings, productive meetings with the White House, with the Army Corps of Engineers, headquarters staff at the Pentagon, and with HUD Secretary Ben Carson. We also met with the congressional delegation, Senators Warner and Kane, and Congressman Bobby Scott, and Congressman Scott Taylor. During all of these meetings, we discussed the Norfolk Flood Control Project, and I'm happy to report that the project is moving forward successfully and ahead of schedule. Two words that you normally don't associate with Army Corps of Engineers projects. And I think that this, the fact that the project has moved forward so, so, so well is really a tribute to the leadership of, of this city. And the Corps has mentioned that to me several times, and they even use the city of Norfolk as an example when they're talking to other cities of the best way to partner with the Army Corps of Engineers. So you all should be very proud of that. The city identified it had a flooding problem early on and took steps to address that, that issue. They paid, as you know, you paid for a flood control study, a private study, and that continues to pay dividends to this day. The Army Corps continues to use data from that study to advance their own study, and that's one of the main reasons why the timeline has moved forward so quickly. And so I think the city deserves a lot of credit for that. But there is a caveat here. You know, the, the phase that the project is in now is the study phase. We're hoping that the study will be wrapped up in early 2019. We're actually working to try to speed that timeline up a bit so we can mesh with the congressional schedule for authorizing the next phase of the, of the project, which is the construction phase. And that is really the, the heavy lift for this project, and that's where the city leadership, Mayor Alexander, where the congressional delegation are all going to have to work together to move that project forward. But I'm confident that will happen, and I'm confident that the project will be brought to a successful conclusion. It's too important not to be successful, and so I, I think that everything is headed in, in, in a positive way. In addition to talking about the flood control project, we also discussed the city's plans for the St. Paul area. That was of particular interest to Secretary Carson and his staff at HUD. As you know, many of those planned improvements are closely related to the citywide flooding issues. And then finally, we also discussed the city's desire to improve the pedestrian pathway next to the customs facility. That building, as you know, is a historic building. It is owned by the General Services Administration, and the primary tenant is the Department of Homeland Security, and specifically the Customs and Border Patrol. And so we have been meeting on a regular basis with both GSA and CBP to move that process forward. We have a stakeholders' meeting scheduled for August with CBP that we can hopefully go through any remaining issues, and I'm confident that after that meeting, we'll have a path forward as to how, how to move those, those improvements to fruition. In addition to those issues during my 12 years doing work for the city, the city has shown leadership on issues related to transportation. shown leadership on issues related to transportation, related to homelessness, related to first responders and law enforcement, and I expect that leadership to continue under Mayor Alexander, and I look forward to working with all of you on advancing that agenda. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris, Mike, or any others? Okay. Mr. Manager.
Chris, thank you. So Mayor, we really wanted you all to have a chance to see the delegation. As you all know, come next January, things get a little crazy, and we are reacting to a lot of things. And you've got 3,000 bills introduced and 1,700 passed. We don't have time for these folks to come sit down and let you see them, but the main message we want you to know is you've got a strong team in place and a coordinated effort, and we really appreciate y'all being with us. So, Kim, I'd ask you to...
Ms. Ray. I have one quick question. When we do our legislative priorities, and I think you made me hit on it last year or the year before, with regard to Norfolk Public Schools, but is it possible that, and we may have talked about it before, is it possible that we could look at, if we could look at what other cities' legislative priorities are and then underscore those as things that are important to Portsmouth and Norfolk and Virginia Beach and Chesapeake? We may have individual priorities, but there's got to be at least one or two or three things that we all agree on, and when we send it to, when we send our delegation, they have to deal with their, you know, they interact with their colleagues that represent other cities, that there would be highlighted, this is also important to Portsmouth, this is also important to Chesapeake. And I don't think we've done that in the past, but it might make a difference in terms of helping the General Assembly members know that, you know, this is not something I'm out here on an island by myself with.
A great thought. I think what we do do is the Heppert Rose delegation, the caucus does meet on occasion, Yvonda and her peers meet on occasion, but I think the idea of really identifying those specific...
And actually, the Heppert Rose delegation met this morning. Yes, all right. Okay. Mr. Manager.
All right. So, Kim, if you'll, I'm going to jump up just to be out of y'all's way, Mayor, and I think I can do this in five minutes or less. It's really, and what I'll also do, because we're doing this quickly, is, because I want to have a couple minutes for James at the end, is I'll put this in your packet on Friday. But really, what this is intended to do is be a little bit thought-provoking for you all as you take five weeks, and as Mr. Riddick says, it gives us an opportunity to maybe get ourselves in a little bit of trouble while y'all aren't watching over us. So we want to give you a chance to know what it is we really want to focus on when we come back. And so we've put these up here really in the, and these are the things that I think you all will be addressing and having conversations about. So when you look at housing, we'll come back, probably at your retreat, and talk about the strengthening neighborhoods pilot. Remember, our whole housing strategy is strengthening neighborhoods on one hand and the deconcentration of poverty. So the St. Paul's area is a big piece, and I'm sure we'll talk about that sometime out front tonight, but that'll be certainly a focus for us when you all come back. We've talked a lot in this room about our gem, we have a lot of publicly-owned property that should be in the stream of commerce, and we'll bring to you a process for getting those properties back in the stream of commerce. Heard a lot last week at the meeting about code enforcement, and so we're going to give you some information, but I suspect that ends up being a retreat topic. It's a tough one to get, a lot of depth of conversation in this room in 10 or 15 minutes. I anticipate that being a retreat topic. We've talked, just like the gem lot piece, we've got a lot of land in Huntersville, and we want to talk about that.
Just real quick on Kemper, just something for Mike and James to talk about, that there's citizens that are ready to volunteer to be, do a citizens committee to look into code enforcement in Norfolk and to give feedback on that, and that may be something you want to start sooner than waiting until September, because we're all really hearing a lot about code enforcement again, which I haven't heard as much in a year. It's been a couple of years that I've heard this much discussion happening in the community, but it's creeping back up. But I think one way to be proactive about that is to get some citizen volunteers involved in that. And I know Angela and I have met with one that's volunteered to chair it, but that's something that we would, I think would be great to have happen before you even get to September.
So if you've got somebody you want to talk to, just give us a name.
Can I add to that? If Martin maybe can add to this is, I would really appreciate if we could have a delegation to sit down with the judges and the legal system to see if they could help us understand what we're going through and to work together. We've talked about this in the past, and I think this latest episode has brought that up again. We have way too many continuances, and it really torts our abilities to...
It may go towards our legislative package, too, because we may need to request some changes in...
So, you know, I don't know who's the best one, whether it's Martin or Bernard or Kenny to sit down with the delegation, but I'd really appreciate us moving with equal speed on that.
Okay. Thank you. In terms of, I think recreation, I've heard a lot from you all, we talked about it today, the importance of having facilities and additional facilities to what we have, but ultimately a sustainable maintenance strategy for open space and parks, and so we'll talk to you some about that. On education, you know, you've got the back-to-school fest on August 26th, but we'll build, we'll continue to build toward that conversation about a funding formula, and a lot of conversation in the council chambers about facilities.
Mr. Manager, under education, for your consideration, every year we come back and we say that we're going to have meeting, ongoing meetings with Norfolk Public Schools, and if that's something that you and Norfolk Public Schools can work out, the joint meetings, as well as the city and Norfolk Public Schools can plan on the agenda topics together that focuses on our priorities. Because one thing I suggested last year and previous was looking at the initiatives for Norfolk Public Schools and pairing them up with the priorities of the city of Norfolk, because there is some interest there, especially with the housing and public safety. It all involves one, and so if you could give that to us, that would be great as well. And we get a jumpstart on it, and it'd be ready for us, because we got to do this early.
Okay. And two things that are happening are Dr. Boone, senior staff, and our senior staff are meeting on a monthly basis, and mayor, vice mayor, chair, board chair, vice chair, and Dr. Boone and I are meeting. We missed our last meeting, we're getting that rescheduled.
Can we have like an update on that? I mean, just a brief bullet points, maybe, of what was discussed in those meetings? Because you guys are in them, we're not in them, and we have no idea what's going on in them. And so if it's something that you're dealing with or talking about and constituents bring it to us, we don't go, well, I don't know anything about that, and then you all are already discussing it. At least we have, you know, some form of communication to know what you're talking about and what issues you're discussing, and, you know, that would be very helpful for us as well.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. In terms of Life on Learning Commission, we've talked about, and we'll get that launched this fall. Public safety, you've heard me say, and you've seen us spend a lot of time, I think we, you know, we get dinged a lot about regionalism and how effective we are with regionalism, or perhaps at times ineffective. I think public safety is a place where the folks in that industry, they're just by their very nature, they want to collaborate and want to collaborate among themselves, but also across city lines, and we think we'll bring some interesting things to you around the sort of broader picture of homeland security in the region. FirstNet, you saw the governor be the first state in the US to join FirstNet, and so we'll come to you and talk about that, this idea of getting everybody on the same radio frequency, and so we'll bring you some thoughts on how we get involved in that as a city. And then you saw last week, a lot of emphasis from a fire perspective on bystander initiatives, Stop the Bleed and Pulse Point and some of those sorts of things. Technology, to move beyond your specific priorities, we'll continue to focus on open data. Resilience, a lot happening, continuing to happen relative to Chesterfield Heights and the NDRC grant, and that'll certainly come back to you. And one of the things, we'll start spending some real money there, and want you all to know what we're doing there. Chris talked about the core study that Colonel Kelly stood here and talked to you all about, and obviously that'll come forward. And then just other stuff that doesn't neatly fall into your priorities from a finance perspective, in all likelihood, we'll have a large bond sale before too long. Rating agency visits will be really important, and we want to have the rating agencies actually come to Norfolk. You know, historically, most of the time, cities go to New York, it's just convenient and efficient. But we think the Norfolk story is one that you need to see and feel, and so they'll come in the fall. You know about the zoning code rewrite, and certainly that'll continue to move forward. And then a lot of conversation, as you all talked about, code enforcement, I think another one we hear a lot about is parking. And so coming back to you all with a parking strategy that is not only about supply, but the management of that supply, the fees that we charge for parking, we're probably going to push the envelope with you a little bit, or challenge it, or maybe raise some fees that we haven't raised in a while, but also is there a role? There are some things that are happening from a technology perspective I'm not sure y'all know about. I think Ms. McCollum, Bart shared some things with her recently, but I want you to know sort of what we're doing there. Yes, ma'am.
On parking, can you all look at, it may not be as much of a safety issue now because it's the summer and it stays dark until nine o'clock, but when we have special events in our parking garages and it's cash only, at 5:01, it's dark in the winter, and with Waterside and the Main, it's just not safe having those parking attendants in those little booths with all that cash money. So there should be a way that we can accept credit cards to, you know, so that it is from a safety perspective, and then those of us who don't carry cash, it would just be extremely, you know, helpful, but anyway. But just to say, primarily a safety issue.
We're looking at that very hard, and we'll keep you apprised. And then from a facilities perspective, obviously, we've got the Plaza, the Civic Plaza here that's continuing to go forward, Southern Arcade is continuing to go forward, both inside and outside. And then on the arts and cultural front, we've got the study that's going on with Chrysler Hall, and obviously the work that's going on with Scope, so those things will come back to you in the fall as well. Organizationally, again, we're building toward the retreats, September 18, 19, and it doesn't feel like we've, I feel like we just adopted the budget, and yet we're talking about the 19 budget. So that, a lot of that process will start pretty quickly, and we really want to use the retreat to really start to get a sense of the things that are important to you all, so that those are the things that we start to resource, and just stay on code enforcement for a minute. If we want to change how we're doing code enforcement, then we need to resource that, and then that needs to become a conversation that gets embedded in our budget proposal. You heard from Yvonda and Mike and Chris about the legislative agenda, that'll get going in earnest, but we'll have that piece. The one comment I make to you there, and I think we do this pretty well, is less is more, in all likelihood. In other words, what are the things that are really, really important to us and have a pretty tight package that perhaps has other cities that are supporting it as opposed to throwing the laundry basket, or the kitchen sink out there? We've got some key roles that I've got to get filled now that you all finally found the city manager. We've got to find some key roles in terms of the chief marketing officer, a couple of deputy slots, a public works director, we all said goodbye to David Ricks last week, and a couple of other key slots. And then one of the things that you all have been clear to me about, and one of the things we want to bring forward to you in all likelihood in the retreat, is that dashboard, that set of metrics that we are going to put before you all on a regular basis that really measures our success and measures our performance. So I know that was quick, but I just want y'all to sort of have this, and as I said, I'll put it in your Friday packet, but give you plenty to think about as we go forward during this five-week recess.
So, Mr. Manager, for the dashboard, do you have a copy of the last dashboard we have? It has a list of everything. And so just a couple of weeks ago, check, 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 we were on schedule for everything. I think there's only one item left on that initial dashboard, but I'll be more than willing to share that. It's so cool to share.
Glad to hear. We'll try.
We're on track.
All right. Ready? All right. Okay. So we'll do Nighthawks next time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. James, I'm sorry, pal. Let me say this, y'all know this as we're running upstairs, James has done a phenomenal job in that program and being replicated in other cities now, and I think we've got great success, and...
James, who's doing?
117, oh, it's close to 280. Phenomenal turnout.
What city announced that they have a similar program this year?
Portsmouth started. Chesapeake.
Virginia Beach is doing a program at Lake Edward that looks awfully similar. So is Charlotte. James, you're not allowed to travel to North Carolina, buddy.